I would like to, if people are good, call the Winchester School Committee meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Ms. Bergstrom is in some traffic and en route, but will be here shortly and be joining us. Also tonight, there's, the Select Board had scheduled the Lynch traffic hearing tonight, so Michelle and I are going to sort of tag team. She's going to jump out for, to attend part of it, and then I'm going to jump out to attend the other part. So pardon the, moving around a little bit. She'll take over the meeting if we're still running at that point. All right, so the first agenda item is a public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? Seeing no one here for public comment, I will close public comment. The next agenda item, I'd like to move to our student reports. So, over to you guys.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. So from Winchester High School, we will be hosting a Nutrition for Athletes talk at the high school on November 2nd at 6:30, and Sarah McGowan will be the speaker there. She is a registered clinical dietitian, so we are super excited about that. This talk is kind of directed to middle and high school students, but is open for anybody to come. There will be a free dinner provided along with the talk as well. So we think it'll be an awesome opportunity for anybody just who wants to learn about athlete health and nutrition. We do have an RSVP that should be going out in the McCall newsletter, as well as the high school newsletter, I believe, and students can find that on the warning announcements page. So go ahead and RSVP for that. We're super excited.
Yeah, the reason why we're giving this talk led by Winchester Coalition Dot Butler is there's been like a rise in eating disorders for at like each team at the high school, and coaches pointed that out and talked to Dot Butler about that. So yeah, that's why we're hosting this talk and hopefully spread more awareness and educate high school students about eating habits and training habits.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. So I'd like to begin our meeting tonight by just acknowledging the recent events in Israel and Gaza, the ongoing conflict in Ukraine, and other conflicts that are affecting people worldwide. You understand that news of distressing events can be overwhelming, evoking a range of emotions within our student, family, and school community. So you know, if you or another student or family member needs support, please reach out to a friend, a family member, or a school counselor who can help connect you with the appropriate resources. Certainly to those who are directly affected by these events, please know that our thoughts are with you, and thank you all to our community for the kindness and support of one another during these difficult times. If anyone on the committee wants to add anything, they're welcome to. Otherwise, I will hand it over to the superintendent. I will hand it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. This actually is the first public meeting that we've had since the passing of former finance and operations director, Peter Rowe, who as you know was our part-time interim. And as I used to say to him, he was better at 10% than most people were at 90% ever, very much indebted to his time here, his work here, his friendship to not just me, but I believe others, the relationships that he built, I think, in a short time, his mentoring, and that's not easy of Andrew Maron over the course of the last couple of years, who put us in just in a great position for a transition. Peter had a chance to attend both the wake and the funeral. I know some of you were able to make those as well, and what really struck me about it was just the closeness of his family and how okay his kids were with his passing, that they just were so solid in who they were. It was just such a true reflection of him as a father, and I think of their mother, obviously, but sad and you know, no time is enough time, no matter how old people are when they pass, because it's just never enough time with those you love. But they just celebrated who he was, and you could just tell they are going to be fine. They're going to be okay. They've got the foundations they need from him to carry on his legacy. So it was very mixed emotions with all of it, but I'm just so grateful that we had the opportunity to have him when we did, that he joined us during that time, and feel very grateful and have, I know, passed our well wishes along to the family. So, and that's really all I have for this evening.
Do any other committee members want to? I know some of you were at the service. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Can I add just a comment that, in particular, because of when he came and COVID, many members of the public don't kind of see all of our upper level administrators, and many in the public didn't see Peter very much. He did interface, I think, very well with the finance committee and other boards, and was tremendously helpful to me and I presume many other school committee members and the superintendent.
And with the business planning and the business office.
What I really appreciate so much about Peter was that he was willing to come on board and help us. We were in a very, we were in a pinch. This is a difficult position to fill. The talent pool is very shallow for this position. Peter had a tremendous amount of experience. I was looking at his resume over the weekend. I mean, he had almost 15 years at the Boston Public Schools. He rose to the level of deputy superintendent. He went to Brookline. He was at Brookline for 17 years, deputy superintendent for administration and finance. Then he went to Lincoln Sudbury. Then he went to the Harvard Public Schools. He spent a year at the Lexington Public Schools, and in those last two posts, he was in an interim position. So he was just bringing an incredible wealth of knowledge and experience to those districts that found themselves like we did in a pinch. There is sort of a cottage industry in Massachusetts education, right? When you have these really seasoned administrators who've essentially retired, but they're willing to bring their talents and their expertise to a district that's in a pinch, because we were having a hard time finding someone to fill the position, and it took us a while before we appointed Andrew here. So I just am so appreciative that Peter came when he did, particularly in the context of, you know, the backside of COVID and all the stress that districts were under. I found him to be an absolute pleasure to work with, and in our district, and we, school committee members usually hear from people when they're upset. It's pretty unusual that somebody reaches out to a school committee member to rave about something or someone, and I actually got a few compliments about Peter. It was wonderful to hear. So I'm just very appreciative, Frank, that he was able to come and appreciate you managed to twist his arm, but we're a stronger district for him having stepped up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Neither.
I'll just echo what both Dr. Hackett and Mr. Nixon have said, and Ms. Bergstrom and I were able to go to his wake, and it was, it was just an honor to work with him and to know him.
I'll just add that having worked with a number of people in school finance in a number of different capacities, Peter just really stood out as someone who could help anyone understand what they needed to know, and I think his dedication and his time here definitely will have a lasting impact on, you know, the relationships that he built and the way that he was able to present our budget. So I'm just very appreciative that he was willing to give us the time that he was able to and that I got a chance to meet and work with him.
And I'll just say that he was always a thoughtful and kind person, who spent a lot more time than he probably needed to helping people like me come up to speed on school budgets and things, but you know, he'll obviously be very missed, and we appreciate everything he's done to help, you know, bring the district forward. You know, he just cared a lot. So, is there any other comments? I will.
Just may I make one, given your opening remarks about the traffic meeting tonight?
Yes.
So there, some Lynch abutters, immediate neighbors, have reached out to management in the EFPBC with some good questions about traffic circulation, site design, but questions as well that go beyond the actual limits of the project, more into the neighborhood. We, EFPBC received those questions, I want to say late August and through September with Meg White's help, we worked to kind of figure out who was the responsible party. Some of them fell into the wheelhouse of the building committee, and some fell into the wheelhouse of management. And so we've actually provided a pretty thorough set of responses to them. They remain connected to the project through Meg White, but we have shared both with the Select Board and then just recently to you, you know, that sort of compiled list of questions. So I want the committee to know that's out there. It's not really a discussion item for us, but at some point, if you or Dr. Hackett wouldn't mind just sharing that with the committee, everybody would sort of be aware of kind of what the questions and the answers are out there. It would be helpful.
Absolutely. Yeah. It was good questions, idling and whatnot, so we will do that. All right, moving to our next agenda item is the consent agenda. If people are comfortable keeping everything on this consent agenda, we can just take a motion.
A motion to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. I had to pause for a minute there because I had to think, do I have to do a roll call or not? But we're all here, and Michelle isn't here, so we're good.
We're good.
All right, moving on to reports, updates, and action items, our first item is the Lynch replacement project update.
Dr. Hackett, since we're running a few minutes ahead of schedule, should we perhaps take something slightly out of order? Or is he ready?
Our friends not here yet.
Is Charlie close?
I think he was going to call in at 6:15. Okay.
Do you want to jump up to consideration of approval of revised security training dates?
Sure, sure. Thank you. So as you know, we had come to you maybe two meetings ago now to talk to you about creating two early release days. These would be not additional days to the calendar, but they would be currently fully scheduled student days, turning those into early release days, one for grades six through 12, and one through four grades preschool through five, to implement, train and implement the new, and I say that in quotations because it's new but very familiar to us, security protocols that we have adopted, in addition to providing some training and really kind of full training across the board for security and safety within school buildings, which are various scenarios and protocols that have been in place for a long, for quite some time. The district's very fortunate to have very dedicated incident management team that at the district level meets three times, three or four times a year, as well as school-based teams that meet regularly and feed up into the district level team to always keep the conversations around not just security, but just also safety and well-being moving in front of us all the time. The last time the district did a full-scale district-wide training around security and safety was, we believe, in 2018, so it was pre-pandemic. So we are definitely due, and not for the least which reason is the fact we just have so many new staff since that time. If you think about 2018 and the few years that followed, we had a lot of staff turnover, and we have a lot of new people, and we just think it's, while not ideal and semi-inconvenient for, we know, for parents and students and staff as well, we just think it's time, it's the right time to really kind of hit a strong reset button, do this full-scale training, and then we will be building it into our yearly, just regular training and professional development updates, particularly bringing on and onboarding new staff. So develop the baseline. The goal is to, as best we can, be training within the schools themselves, so the teachers could have access to their classrooms. We had talked to you about doing it in November, and then we were kind of hedging on maybe December. We've now landed on these dates, which is January 11th for preschool through grade five, and February 8th for McCall and the middle school, primarily because it just gets crazy through December, as you know, November, December. Also, we are more than likely going to be utilizing some area local responders in this as well, so that we can provide a little bit more, kind of not one-on-one, but smaller group settings for staff to the best we can. So these are the dates that we would like to establish and use. I would ask if you would consider approving them tonight in replacing the dates that you had previously approved, and we will get these dates out and start communicating on this relatively soon.
I make a motion to approve the revised security training dates of January 11th, 2024, and February 8th, 2024, for the preschool through grade five and McCall and Winchester High School respectively.
Sorry, just a quick question, if I may. On the January 11th day, I know they'll be in the schools, but is the after-school program still going to be able to run?
Yes, great question. So all the after-school programs, we reached out to on the earlier dates. It's not a problem for them to extend. So Kids Borough will be in place.
Okay.
WinRec will be in place.
Okay.
We'll provide transportation.
All right.
To, and Kids Corner as well.
And that'll be okay even with the drill going on in the school? It won't impact the space they need?
Yes, yeah, it's a fairly low-impact drill in terms of the spaces that those programs use.
Got it.
So I will second the motion, but I also just want to, I guess, make a request or make a comment that I made last time, which is that if there are 504 IEP meetings that have already been scheduled that far out with parents, since this is sort of the district initiated that we're changing this, that we kind of bend over backwards to work with them on schedule?
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Anyone else? And we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, with our student reps also voting in favor. Great. So why don't we keep moving from here, and we'll come back to the highlighted ones. So how about general education, transportation, RFP?
We do have Charlie with us.
Oh, then we can jump up.
It appears.
We can jump back to item A, to the Lynch replacement project update. Welcome, Charlie.
Charlie, can you hear us?
You're on mute.
Is this the first time we've done it in this space?
Yes.
Oh, danger zone. Okay.
It's all going to be fine.
All right, well, we see him.
Not with Mr. Maron here.
Full confidence.
Can Charlie hear us?
Charlie, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, and I hear you.
It's almost too loud.
He was too, Mr. Maron was too overexuberant.
He's larger than life.
Over-delivered.
Is there an area mic, or is he hearing, is he hearing all of us? How's this working?
It's just three.
Oh, it's, oh.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Brought that old-school thing from Parkhurst, did you?
The parts are here.
Okay.
For the next generation.
Charlie, are you sharing your screen or?
I'm happy to, if you all are ready for me.
Yeah, we are ready.
We're ready. Go ahead.
Okay. So I want to do what I want to do.
Share screen.
We still can't, there are lights in here, can't we?
No, we cannot do that yet.
Okay. My apologies, I'm just getting sorted here, folks. Now I should be able, now can you, can you see my screen now?
Not yet.
Oh, that's the wrong screen, maybe? Now I'm confused. Are you seeing my slideshow?
Not yet.
Not yet.
What are you seeing? Are you just seeing a black screen?
Yeah, we're not seeing anything.
We're seeing you.
We are. That's interesting. Let's try something different then. Now what are you seeing?
Still you.
Same thing.
We see you.
Not yet. There we go.
There we go. Okay, so are you seeing the slideshow, or are you seeing me and a bunch of other stuff?
We're seeing the presenter view.
Yeah, we're seeing your presenter view.
So I don't know if you can.
This is frustrating. What is my problem?
If you can click that display, perfect. Oh, that was it.
Select display settings, Charlie.
Walk him through it, Andrew. You can do it.
Can you, can you see this?
No, I should be fine. I just don't know why it's not working for me. Here, let's try that. How about that?
Yep.
Yay.
Perfect.
You got it.
Okay, you're good?
Yep.
I got the slideshow.
Yep.
Okay, just the slideshow.
Correct.
Okay, so, shall I start? Forgive me, it usually goes much more smoothly. I don't know why today was confused, but I apologize. And I'm delighted to not be with you, would be with you virtually, and happy to walk you through the project and where we are these days. And as always, please feel free to interrupt at any moment. You should, I hope we're now seeing a current status slide?
Yes.
Yep, you are, great. Okay, so we are bidding, the project is out to bid, which is a remarkable milestone after two years of work and labor. And it went out on October 11th. We've already issued an addenda, we're about to issue another addenda, we'll issue a third addenda before the filed sub-bids come back, and then the final bids should come in around November 17th. So for any of you who are familiar with public bid laws in Massachusetts, there are filed sub-bids, which are basically trade bids, which make up nearly half of the entire value of the contract. I don't think quite, but most of it. And then there are general bids, and they're separated, and so those filed sub-bids are a multitude of trades from windows to mechanical systems to plumbers and the like. And then the general contractor, who is responsible for the entire project, provides a bid that includes all of those filed sub-bids, because they come in first, and then they take those filed sub-bids and they put them under the umbrella of the general contract, as well as the rest of the work that isn't involved in the general bid, in the filed sub-bids, and that all becomes the final bid. So we hope that before Thanksgiving, we should have the final bids back and have a good idea of where we are relative to cost and relative to the estimates. If all goes well, we're going to, the contractor should be mobilizing in December. It always takes a little while to get going. They need to sign a contract with the town, they need to get their permits started, they need to put up construction fencing and the like. So we're expecting that to be happening in December. We think construction will begin in earnest in January of next year, and the hope is, as it has been for really since the beginning of the project, is to be substantially complete in the summer of 2025, with students moving in in late August of 2025. And I expect, I put here project completion fall of '25. I fully expect that the project will continue to drag on into the fall. They always do. There's going to be punch lists, and maybe, you know, site work still remaining. It rarely wraps up smoothly, these projects, but the goal, of course, is to have the kiddos in seats in school for the beginning of the fall semester in 2025. So this is all very exciting, and we're eager to get it started, and hopefully we will. So any questions about schedule at all?
Charlie, can you just say a brief word about the pre-qualification process we went through, so we kind of, to some degree, we know who we're getting when the bids are coming in?
Sure, so you are, you were required by Massachusetts State Bid Laws, statute, that you have to pre-qualify all the bidders. And what that means is you send out a general open request for submissions to anyone interested who can be, who can qualify, and they submit their qualifications. And this is both for the filed sub-bids that I mentioned, as well as the general bidders, which I mentioned. And by statute, the awarding authority has to set up a review committee, which includes the owner's project manager, the architect, and members of the building committee, in order to review all of those submissions. So Chris, I don't know how many precisely submissions we had, but it was 60 to 80.
I lost count. Yeah, I lost count. I just wanted to say that one of the requirements of that submission includes references. So the team from Hill, who's our owner's project manager, really did yeoman's work. They followed up on every single reference from, you know, whether it was the GCs or the filed sub-bids, to get the information on how these folks have been doing. And also, one of the other requirements is they have to indicate, you know, do they have any claims, any legal issues, you know, outstanding or settled? And for general contractors, you know, most of them do. It's sort of the nature of the beast. When you're a general contractor, you sort of touch everything. So that's not unusual for there to be some sort of legal issue on a project. And again, Hill was very careful and thoughtful to follow up with project owners and team members to understand what the nature of the issue was. So I would just say, Charlie, I thought our pre-qualification team felt very informed and supported by all that work.
Right, and so, you know, obviously, the key here is that you're looking for a firm that can do the work. So as Chris mentioned, references, but also you want to make sure that they have the bonding capacity and that they have, that they have an established track record of doing projects of the scale and complexity of the project we're considering. None of this is a guarantee, of course, that we're going to get a competent contractor in any particular category, because we sometimes don't with public work, and that's just how it goes, and then we just deal with it during construction. But that is the goal, to weed out anybody that we felt like was not qualified. So we're going into it with a list. We don't, by the way, we have no idea how many of those firms will elect to bid. They're not required to bid after they're pre-qualified, and they can decide not to. So we'll see how many bidders we get in the end, and how competitive those bids are. So that's the sort of where we are. It's been a long road, but we did, we submitted, I don't have it here, but we submitted the 90% submission to the MSBA six weeks ago or so. We submitted the 100% documents to the MSBA, so they are fully in the loop. We satisfied all of their milestone submission requirements. They are aware that we are out to bid, so.
Could you just?
With, excuse me, with the funding agency. So I'm going to go through some images that, a lot of this comes from, a lot of this comes from the most, one of the most recent presentations that was.
Oh, excuse me, Charlie?
Charlie, Karen has a question.
Charlie? Charlie, we've got a question.
Oh, I just had a question. Could you just remind us when the demolition of the old school starts?
Could you hear that, Charlie?
Yeah, I did, I did, and we don't know. So all, because the contractor gets the site to work with, we don't tell them how to do, how to sequence their work, and we don't tell them how to schedule their work. My guess is that they will start it immediately, because that would make the most sense. However, you know, who knows what plan they may have, but I think any contractor, I would say, any contractor is going to want to get the old building down and out of the way, because they'll use the area where the old building was for staging, for parking, for access, for a lot of other things. No contractor likes a tight site. All contractors like space to work in. So you would think it would probably come down in, you know, January, February, March, April. And by the way, it does take a little while, because they have to abate it first, so, you know, for anyone who knows that process, you know, the whole thing gets wrapped in plastic, and it takes quite a while, and you don't really see any change on the exterior, but they're busy working on the inside, abating asbestos-containing materials, which are then removed from the site before the building comes down. But then it all comes down very quickly, of course, when it does come down.
Can I just, can I?
It doesn't really take many weeks to take a building like that down, once they get a few machines in there and start really taking it apart. So my guess is if they get their paperwork in and they get the abatement going in January, that you might see the building coming down in February or March.
I was just going to add that this is a, this is a question, Charlie, we've received through the FAQ page on the project website. All we can, what we have said definitively is no demolition before Thanksgiving, but we're not going to. But we're not going beyond that for the reasons that Charlie just said, because it's really up to the general contractor in their abatement process. But it's, it's, it'd be hard to imagine them doing it before the end of the calendar year, for sure.
No, I don't think you'll see the building come down until the early, late, late winter, early spring. However, you will also be seeing plenty of activity out there in parallel, because they're gonna be instantly trying to dig foundations and get going on their, on all that. So, I think excavation will probably happen very quickly, stripping the site, removing trees, et cetera, et cetera.
And will there, well, maybe this is more for us.
Karen has another question.
But, like, back, back in the day, when VEO was being built, right before, or I guess there was a building, a groundbreaking ceremony? Will there be something like that? And all the kids were brought back from Parker, Stover, to the Vincentoan site, so, but this might be for another time.
I defer to the superintendent, but I'm pretty sure the MSBA seizes every opportunity for a ceremony to let people know how their tax dollars are spent.
Absolutely. Yep, yep, absolutely.
It's kind of fun.
It, it, yes. It is fun. It's great for the kids, as long as we can keep the dignitaries understanding it's about the kids. So, yes, and shovels, yes.
Yeah, the shovels.
We'll know more about timelines around that, when, and what's appropriate to, for.
Yep.
Probably we don't want them there during demo.
Yeah, really.
Back to you, Charlie.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
No. Okay, so, a lot of this, a lot of these images are, not all of them, but a lot of these images are from a fairly recent EFPBC meeting, where we talked through, you know, kind of just summarizing some of the design concepts. But most of the design of the building has sort of been in place for a while now. But this is just kind of a summary of where we ended up with a lot of the design topics. You can see here the site plan. One of the reasons we were talking about site at this meeting was because there had, there were some abutter questions that got sent in, mostly to Make White, and from engineering. So, part of the topic was just, you know, addressing how this, how, how abutters will, what they'll see, how traffic works, and those kind of things. So, so this, this site plan is not dissimilar to ones you've seen in the past. And you can kind of, I don't know, can you see, oh, can you see that in my pen? You probably can.
Yeah.
So, one of the questions, a lot of the questions were for Brantwood, Brantwood Road residents, about how pickup and drop-off and the light worked on the west side of the site. So, of course, people, the pickup and drop-off is gonna be via Brantwood Road. You'll come in, you'll take a left-hand turn, you'll then go into the site, essentially where, right now, the curb cut is, for sort of the service area of the existing school. And you can see the existing school there in the dashed red line. And then, so that means that buses, there aren't many buses, but buses and vehicles will have their right-hand door, right-hand wheels to the curb. They'll then leave, they'll then circulate from the site in a counterclockwise fashion and leave again and go back out onto Brantwood Road. So, that, but, but there's a mature grove of trees along there, if you look, which we're keeping, so those aren't going anywhere. And then the rest of the site has been developed essentially in a way that I think all of you are familiar with, having seen this presentation previously. The only change that could have happened since we spoke last, and I'm not sure it did, is there was some reconfiguration of the pickup-drop-off loop at the eastern side of the site, where it got a little bit longer along the building, which allows us a little bit more queuing. But the goal is to have a reasonable length of queue, both on the eastern, the western side and the eastern side, in terms of cars stacked, and get them off of, you know, the access roads and off of roadways like Brantwood Ave. So, the, so the hope is that, that that will, that that will happen with this design. So, that's kind of where we are with the site plan. And the, you know, we've developed the play areas in the rear. We've developed the play area in the front on the south side, in conversation with the district, in terms of play equipment and the like. There's the sort of field, the artificial field in the front. So, the next, the next slide is just an aerial view of that, and it gets you, gives you a better sense of the neighborhood. And this is looking on the south side of the building. And you can see the, the play area in the foreground. You can see the parking to the northwest corner, and of course, the other parking array around the site. And of course, there are, this is showing solar canopies. The presumption is we will have ground-mounted canopies over parking areas to the west and in front of the building, to the south of the building. And then, of course, we do have a raise on the roof as well. This is sort of, if you were in a helicopter, you'd be, you'd be circling around the site. This is now from, instead of being from the south, it's from the west. You can see the entry into Brantwood Avenue here at the corner parking lot. In the, in the corner, there's the building stretching out. Of course, the soccer fields to the left, to the north. And then, we circle around. Again, there we are on top of the soccer field, looking at the building from north to south. You can see the gym here on the right, and the classroom wing to the left, and again, the play area in the, in the, in the, in the, in this case, the sort of background, the far background. And then here we are on the Horn Pond Brook side, where the bridge is now. And the nice thing about this is all of that mature stand of trees really remains, with the exception of where the pedestrian bridge is being constructed.
Charlie?
And so, those are the areas-
Charlie, Tom has a, Tom has a question.
Charlie, I just had a quick, one quick question. On one of those aerial shots, I think the helicopter shot, number two, maybe, I couldn't tell, is there space between Brantwood Road and the parking lot, or, or is it just all paved?
Yes. So, so, oh, you, you mean over here?
Yeah.
Yes, right there?
Yeah.
Where my red line is?
Yep.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, that's, that's what I was asking.
You might, you might go back to your site plan, Charlie, that could show that a little more clearly.
Yeah, I can, I can do that. So, you're asking about right over here?
Yes.
Like where that number eighteen is. So, we no longer have any, any trees there. We just have a grassy kind of, there's a grassy, there's a grass, narrow grass lawn there. There are trees to the west, and we're keeping mature trees on the corner of Brantwood and Pond. But there won't be any trees really right in front of where these solar canopies are, because they don't really fit with the solar canopies very well.
Okay.
But of course, as I mentioned previously, you come farther down Brantwood, we're keeping that mature stand of trees. And then there are, there will be planted trees to the south of the parking lot along Brantwood. And then, at some point, it just becomes the existing tree cover.
Can I share, Tom, that, so that, that very area you're asking about?
Yeah.
Charlie and his team created an image of what that looks like from Pond Street. That's actually the, the last item in that memo that you just got. You haven't had it long.
Yeah.
But if you share that with the committee, they'll be able to get a better sense of what Charlie's talking about.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
So, there's the corner of Brantwood and Pond. And so, the, the trees at the corner remain. And there is, you will see the solar canopies to your left as you drive in. And there really isn't room to get trees there particularly. So, so, that's sort of what, what that view is gonna be like. And that shows the existing crosswalk and the like. And there will be a path, too, that goes behind the parking lot, so that people could actually get from Pond, pedestrians could get from Pond Street back to the soccer field without coming into the, coming into the driveway.
That's great.
So, that's kind of that view, and that was one of the things that the, the abutters sort of wanted, we, we thought the abutters might wanna see. So, so let's go inside quickly for a minute, and you can just see some updated images. This is the lobby, the main lobby, and you're seeing here, this is where you're back to the soccer fields, looking back towards the main entrance. And if you look up, you're looking up at the second floor where the art classroom is. And this is really right out, this is right outside of the gym. And then you turn, if you're standing there and you turn, turn your head to the right, you're seeing into the gym. And you're seeing the main stair go up from the first floor to the second floor. And there's some nice little spots for seating, and some nice little spots for some plantings. And we have a green wall there. And that's the gym, if you enter into the gym. So, it's gonna look like, you know, it's gonna be familiar, that it's gonna be like other gyms you've seen in elementary schools. But it will have a full-size, high-school-sized court, so it will have some flexibility, but be about being reused around other things like out-of-leagues. And, and, you know, it can be a practice court for the high school, et cetera, et cetera. But it will also have crossports, which are smaller, so you can run two different basketball games simultaneously. And there will be a divider in the center. And there are a few, few benches along the wall. We didn't, you know, the, we have benches along the wall, and then the thought is, for overflow crowds, you can use fold-up chairs on the stage, pretty platform, pretty effectively, as kind of endzone seats as well. So, that's the gym. And then, this is the other lobby. This is the, the pre-K lobby. And if you, here you're looking up and you're seeing the walkway between sort of classroom pods on the second floor and the third floor. And you're looking at where the pre-K entrance is. And then this is a nice sort of rear lobby with a door, doors that go out to the north and to the, out to the northern playground and the soccer fields. This is the cafeteria. So, here you have, on the, on the right-hand side would be access to the kitchen, the serving line, you know, the, the digital menu screens and the like. This blue up here is obviously acoustic treatment. And it's, you know, it'll have this western window that goes out to a little patio and, and a lot of southern exposure with light as well. So, that's the caf. And then, this is the media center library, which is on the second floor, which is a very nice space, and it's quite high, because it actually, you can, part of it is low in the front, part of it is high in the back, but you can actually see up to the third floor from there. So, there are all these kind of interconnected spaces where you can see up, you can see down. So, it's a big school with three floors, which is a little bit different for an elementary school, and I think a little bit different for an elementary school in Winchester, perhaps. But, but at least there are these kind of visual cues to where you are, to remind you where you are, and remind you where you're going or where you came from. This is on the third floor, the STEM lab, so maker space, basically. And then, this is on the third-floor corridor, looking back down into that media center where we just were. So, you'll be able to kind of, that, that's something everyone, everyone on the second floor and the third floor will pass every day, which is kind of fun. And then this is a typical classroom wing, so the staff requested all the cubbies in the hallways, in this case, so all of the cubbies are in the corridors. There is storage above the cubbies, and teachers also requested, is of course, as much storage as possible. And they, you know, these, these floors are kind of color-coded by, by, by floor, so there's some kind of wayfinding around, whether you're on the green floor, the blue floor, or the orange floor, et cetera. And there is kind of in the center of it a kind of breakout space for students. So, the next part of the slideshow is kind of interesting. And this is something, we went through a really interesting exercise with, with Chris and with staff, the high school, well, your, your, your district art, the director of arts programs, I guess, as well as Chrissy. And it was to really identify places for art that could get kind of specifically made for this project. So, we were trying to block out spaces and say, okay, you could use this if you wanted to. So, this is that big lobby that you saw previously, that had a, had a, had a big picture in it. And this is, this purple box is not what the proposed image is for, for a mural. It is just the idea that you could put something right there. And so, a lot of exciting ideas came out of that conversation, including the idea that, that you could have a local artist work with kids to do something, or it could be commissioned a piece, or it could be a student-made piece. And I think that is something that's gonna be ongoing in the next two years. But all we're doing is saying, okay, we'll give you lighting, we'll give you blocking, we'll give you a location, this is it. And we've already given, we already, we've already distributed the size, so everybody knows what the size is. So, the hope is that eventually, there will be some exciting piece of art that will be put on that wall. Hopefully, maybe when the building opens, but if not, at some future date. And that's really what a lot of these images are about, because we were talking about where else we could put stuff. So, then we started talking about, wow, we have this big wall above art on the second floor when you come up the stair. So, this is arriving, this is arriving at the top of the stairs and seeing the art room, which has display cases and the like. And, and for instance, here, we decided, well, it's probably not gonna be that big giant thing, because you have to crane your neck too much to see it. But maybe it could be a low thing that's much, you know, lower scale along the bottom of that. And there were some interesting ideas around that. And then we talked about the cafeteria. And one of the things that we're talking about doing is photographing the existing Lynch mural. And, and if we do that, and have a, have a high-res photograph of it, we have the, the option of creating a vinyl wall graphic of that mural and putting it somewhere. And if that, if that does end up being the desired outcome, we thought this might be a good place for it, which is in the cafeteria. So, here's the other, and you didn't see this, you're backwards to this when you saw the other image, but this is, if you had turned around, you would have seen this wall. This wall above this exterior window has a nice white wall that could in fact have smaller something on it. So, one of the thoughts was, oh, well, maybe that'll be the old mural, but it'll just, instead of being the original mural, which is considerably larger, it could be smaller, and it could be a vinyl wall graphic. So, those were kind, we had that kind of a conversation about art, which was really fun and really exciting. And I think that the building, hopefully, will be full of exciting imagery by the time it is done. There are some graphics that we've created, that we have created, that are kind of wayfind, wayfinding graphics that go with those colors. It will be part of the building as well. And, and so it should be a pretty neat space. So, that's kind of where we are with design. I've shared with you schedule. I've shared with you the updated site plan. You have a good idea of what the exterior of the building looks like in terms of its massing. So, that's kind of where we are with the project. And presuming it goes ahead, and we have good bids, and we launch right into it, well, you'll see progress out there, probably in the new year, if not before. And it'll probably really launch very quickly and has an aggressive schedule. So, before I stop sharing, is there any other questions? Does anybody need to see any slide that I've already shown? Okay.
We're good.
There.
Any questions?
And I can turn myself off, because I don't want, unless people want me to stay, I'll turn myself off, because I can't see you, so I feel self-conscious.
Tom, if you would indulge me and Andrew for a moment, Andrew, can you pull up the Lynch website? So, I wanted to just share with everybody where they can find this information. So, the, the images that Charlie has shared are on the project website. We've spent some time in the past week kind of reorganizing things a little bit, so they're a little more accessible. Let's see, there we go. So, Charlie, I'm just sharing with them the website?
I can see it.
Oh, great. So, first of all, schedule, this homepage, this remains, this is something we update every, frankly, two or three or four months. You know, this is not a weekly update here, but we're, we're close to, once we get to bid date, we'll, we'll have another update on the, on the homepage. But the schedule information that- Uh, but the schedule information that Charlie shared, that is present down here at the bottom. And hopefully I'm not scrolling too fast for you guys. If you go to design, um, we've moved up, the, the image carousel used to be kind of in a different place on the website. So I've, I've moved this up to the top. So everything that Charlie just shared, um, you see here along with a caption that kind of describes the space and some of the design approaches to interior and exterior. I also, I think it's important to share with the committee, we will share no more detailed plans than what's already been on the website. Um, and I hope you guys can appreciate why. I mean, conceptually, we're, really nothing has changed, um, but it's a school and so we don't want to provide too many details, particularly when you talk about doors and entrance and egress and so forth. But conceptually, um, you know, it, it's all the same that it has been. Um, so, so that is there. And then I just again wanted to put in the plug for the FAQ page. Miss Bullen essay, you see the question right there about timeline for demolition.
Right at the top.
Um, I, I want to remind people, um, that the page is up, the email works. Interestingly, we've been getting emails to this address from vendors and suppliers who are interested in knowing where the drawings are and how they can get their product installed in the project. Um, there's answers for that, but, uh, we're not getting too many community questions. Uh, maybe that's a good thing, uh, maybe it just means we're providing all the information. I think, I think that's it. Um, yeah, it's really just, just a plug to remind people, um, this is here. Um, and when we do have updates, we will share them. Um, I, I do need to get, I mean, the text here is correct in that it refers to all the work at Parkhurst. Um, I'll get in there with Andrew maybe after the bell rings someday and we don't have kids in the space and I can get some photographs of the actual finished work, so folks can see how that, um, turned out. So that was it. Thank you, Andrew.
Great. Any, uh, committee questions or discussion?
I have a quick question for Mr. Nixon.
Yeah.
Apologize if you covered this, Mr. Nixon. How are, how is Charlie and EFPPC communicating with the neighborhood and the neighbors about the progress on Lynch, when demolition will come?
You did miss that, actually.
Okay.
We talked about it at the outset and Charlie did.
Okay.
In his opening remarks.
I'll catch up later.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we can do that. And, um, the chair actually just fairly recently got kind of a summary document of some dialogue with neighbors who've raised questions, not only about site access and circulation, but also off-site. Um, so we've been working through Meg White with management to try to capture everything in a holistic way. Um, and we've done that and Charlie's been helpful, Meg White has been helpful. Um, EFPPC reviewed all those responses with neighbors at our meeting, I think on October 2nd. Charlie gave us some helpful imagery, um, from roads and that was just recently sort of updated last week. And then I think you, you haven't had it for twenty, forty-eight hours, I think. So, uh, the chair can circulate that to, uh, the committee.
Okay, and my question comes from where I was. I was just in the Lynch traffic study meeting. And the reason I ask is because I'm wondering what the synergy or the, the, um, they were unable to speak to the, how Charlie and his team are working with Tool, particularly around, um, the new traffic flow that, um, because I was in the EFPPC meeting where Charlie did this presentation for the EFPPC, so I was able to see that part of the presentation already. So I'm curious what the synergy is gonna be, because I can tell they've done a lot of site work about new traffic flows there and then how that affects what's happening outside, then in the neighborhood. Because a lot of what Tool's talking about is current conditions and I'm wondering about the new conditions of Lynch and how that might affect what they're doing.
Right, so, um, all I can say is, you know, we have just this month, shared, um, with the town manager, the assistant town manager, the select board chair, uh, with copies to Meg White, um, those cumulative responses as well as the updated site plan. So management and, you know, leadership of the select board certainly is aware of kind of what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, and how we've answered those questions, um, especially on a night tonight when two, two meetings are going on simultaneously, we can't be in two places at once, though I appreciate, we sort of are, given that you were just there. So we're just doing our best to communicate, um, and be sure people have the latest information.
Okay, because I want to make sure that, um, you know, as we're thinking about this, we're doing so much incredible planning on both sides that we're still making sure that that's connecting between them.
I agree, um, and, and some of what-
It's better when we worked again.
So, as you well know, um, so there may be requests from the neighborhood that Tool may have an opinion on just from a design point of view, right? An efficacy point of view, if you will. Select board and management may have an opinion from a cost point of view as well. So that, all, all of that clearly goes beyond, you know, the scope of the EFPPC.
Right.
Um, and, and we have sort of politely said to neighbors, you know, that this is the extent of what we control. Um, there were a couple of questions that came up that, you know, maybe are technically town or management decisions, but they'd like to make them with the input of the EFPPC. We've identified those as well.
Awesome.
So, and, and Meg White continues to be, you know, a conduit for those folks.
Right.
And we've, I know at the last, I think, three consecutive meetings, we've had some, some neighbors, you know, participate, watch, you know, through, um, uh, what am I trying to say? Just the, the general gallery, if you will, on Zoom. So they're, they're paying attention, they're asking follow-up questions. Again, it goes through Meg White, who just continues to do an amazing job. Meg is incredibly, as she is on so many of our projects, she is incredibly supportive to this project and just brings a great attitude to it, so I'm very appreciative for her.
Who often is in two places at one time?
What's that?
I said, who often is in two places at one time, Ms. White?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And just thank you to Charlie and his team, the new designs are beautiful and it's nice to see it all coming together with the vision and all the input. And we've been thinking about Lynch for a long time and it's exciting to see it at the place it's at.
Uh, fair point and, um, Charlie didn't point it out, but I just, I want to mention, we don't need to pull the site plan up to show it, but, um, you know, the current Lynch today has a curb cut on both sides of the site. The neighbors have long had a concern about through traffic. So, you know, today you can't really drive from one side of the site to the other. If you look at the site plan that Charlie showed and what we have on the website, it may seem like you can do that.
Yeah.
But in fact, we do have a traffic control arm, just like we use at the back, right here at Winchester High School. Um, that will be a control arm that Dr. Hackett, Mr. Marin and others have keys for and perhaps, uh, uh, our principal, Ms. Capodanno. But that, that arm will be down, you know, ninety percent of the time to prevent that kind of cross-traffic. So police, fire, first responders, that kind of thing, there'll be a process and, you know, about when that can come up, but specifically to prevent that cross-traffic. So that's not really readily apparent, because it's a, obviously a high-altitude plan, but that's there.
Thank you.
Great. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, we will let Charlie go, I think. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
And our next agenda item is the Winchester High School floor assessment.
Mr. Chair, if we could, before we go to that, um, we, when we went through the consent agenda, we had, uh, grants from WIFI that you graciously and unanimously approved very quickly.
Yeah.
Which took me a little by surprise, but I would like to have Dr. Ellen Emma introduce, uh, our special guest this evening and, um, touch a little bit just on what those grants are.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Dr. Ellen Emma.
Thank you so much, um, anyways. We are extremely appreciative to the fantastic support that we're getting from WIFI. Um, once again, we love the grants that are either instigated by students or by teachers to try something that's new or isn't yet, what we are able to support in the budget and, um, be able to give WIFI feedback and us feedback on how that's going. So, um, Maggie, our new Karen, um, is here tonight and she will, um, highlight a couple of things and then be available for any questions. And Maggie, I was just thinking, maybe it's best if you just come right here, so you have a microphone.
Well, I'm just very excited to be here and to be representing WIFI, um, and to be able to fill so many grant requests. Um, some that we're very excited about would be the possibility of putting new technology at McCall in their technology engineering area. They've requested a new saw and a dust collecting system and we're just very excited about how innovative and the ability to do some new things and to do something at McCall. Um, we're also very excited about the Wonder Books that the libraries are putting in. We're actually working with the Rotary Club, don't, um, is helping with the donation as well to put books that students can both read and listen to at the same time. Um, especially, so many students are struggling with reading as COVID affected the early grades when they were, um, really trying to learn their reading and the skills. So very excited that the students have the ability to do this. We're also excited about the PACES field trip. Um, we're starting it, we're sponsoring it as a pilot program this year to have these students have the ability to go on a field trip that they are actually planning on and working on and then get to use the skills that they are learning in their class on the field trip. So, those are just a few, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you give us a couple of examples on that last point, the PACES program? And I thank you because I wasn't sure how to pronounce that long acronym.
I'm, I'm assuming-
What are some examples of the field trips they are maybe excited about?
Um, so the students are actually choosing the field trips and they actually wrote a document that they gave us, which was excellent, talking about what they would do, um, what skills they would practice at those ones. So they talked about going to a restaurant, which would, they would do things about how to communicate what food they want, um, how to cope if there's a loud environment or if someone isn't giving them exactly what they want or if what they want is not available. Um, how to be aware of the, uh, things going on around them, even communicating with the people who are sitting at a table with them. They also talked about going to a museum or a zoo, um, or even amusement park. Um, to go to these places that there's crowds they have to deal with, they have to deal with other people being there around them. Um, and how to, some of the things they would do, they would get to take public transportation. And so how do you buy a ticket and how do you get on and how do you follow the schedule? So, um, a lot of skills that they, they're working on skills, but then also skills that will translate for the future for them.
That's great, thank you.
Other questions? We appreciate your support and if there's things we can do, certainly, community can help, you know, donate to WIFI.
Yes.
We really appreciate, uh, everything you do for the schools.
Thank you, we're just very excited to be able to be here and to do this, so, thank you.
This is your first school committee meeting, right?
I was gonna say, yes.
It's the official, well, welcome.
Welcome.
You come bearing gifts, too.
Yay! We like gifts.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you had to wait.
Next time, we should just be sure we don't put WIFI on the consent agenda.
We would just-
Yeah.
Too efficient.
I know. Um, Mr. Nixon, uh, I did upload the, um, EFPPC document, the Lynch replacement, um, document. It's in tonight's folder for anyone who wants to take a look at that.
Great, thank you.
So that is there. Um, all right, uh, Winchester High School floor assessment is our next agenda item. And a reminder, I'm probably gonna hand the meeting over to our vice chair at about seven-thirty to jump into the second half of the Lynch meeting.
What's that, about seven-thirty?
No, I'm gonna, um, hand the meeting over to, uh, Ms. Bergstrom to run it while I jump into the, we're, we're tag-teaming on the Lynch traffic meetings so that someone from the school committee can be there for each part of it.
So I'm gonna actually, um, ask if Mr. Nixon would like to, uh, provide, um, an overview of the documentation he put together for the, um, high school floor assessment. This is not the gymnasium floor, um, mind you, uh, but we have, uh, we have provided the committee with some updates on, and you have seen in person some of the issues that, uh, we started to discover and, and, uh, experience at the high school with certain floors and certain areas. So, Mr. Nixon?
Okay, so, thank you, Dr. Hackett. Um, so the committee, you, you've got three items in your packet. Um, the first is a cover memo. Kept it to a page that describes what, um, our forensic engineer has discovered. Uh, as we've noted here and as we've discussed in the past, uh, we saw some deformation in some flooring materials in this school a couple of years ago. Um, and when they initially presented themselves, you know, DPW kind of wondered if maybe there was a problem with the underlayment, was it a problem with the material? You know, it's sort of like a, a shrug and a, hmm, that looks a little peculiar. Uh, but these folks clean the building regularly and they can see when it's spreading. Um, and so we really appreciate that Chris Conway kind of began to sound the alarm last year because he was seeing more of it and not only was he seeing more of it, 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 the deformation itself was sort of becoming worse. Um, this, the committee, um, joined us for a field trip, you know, a few months ago in the guidance hallway. Um, that was frankly, the worst of it. Um, but so the EFPPC, uh, hired SGH in the spring to come out and physically, um, do some sounding in the school, to take some core samples to bring back to the lab. Um, we had talked, I think Ms. Bergstrom had asked the question previously, you know, what do we know about what's going on under this lab? Uh, DPW folks had managed to get into a couple of crawl spaces to poke around. They found some things, we have reviewed that, I think, in this room, some of the images you've seen. We have some examples of some spalled concrete, um, that's a problem, but they weren't able to get everywhere. So SGH managed to actually get into ninety percent of the crawl spaces, which is tremendous. Um, the good news is this problem is not widespread. Uh, the bad news is, um, it's happening in a number of places in the building. And as the memo explains, and I'll try to, let me go back to our actual article and background, which you all have received. Uh, so the EFPPC's motion is we're requesting a hundred thousand dollars from Free Cash to engage SGH in really phase two, uh, which is to actually prepare engineering documents for the repair and remediation. And in addition, some supplemental testing. Because what SGH has determined is there's actually sort of two chemical pathways to this deterioration. Um, the first is salts, um, so chloride contamination. This is, uh, where we've seen topside deterioration, like in the guidance hallway. When that flooring came up over the summer, and there's images of this in the, in the report, we can look at briefly in a moment, they actually were able to take those samples back to the lab and they confirmed, um, the presence of chlorides. That's important because the chlorides, um, actually affect the natural alkalinity of concrete. That alkalinity that's normally there is actually what protects the steel from corrosion. So this is peculiar because we're kind of wondering, well, where did the salt come from? Um, but there are a number of options about how this can be sort of permanently repaired. But in addition to this, they found in other areas where there was no topside chloride contamination, they actually found, we have carbonation, which is, um, a consequence of prolonged exposure to basically high concentrations of carbon dioxide, um, which is a, sort of a longer, perhaps more nefarious process. It, it takes much longer for, for that to kind of penetrate the concrete, but it has a similar effect. It, it affects the alkalinity and can permit the reinforcing steel to rust. So what you see, I may have, did I lose my connection here? I may have, pardon me. It's not you, Andrew, it's me. Hold on. There we go, I'm back. So we have, we provided a little more detailed explanation for town meeting members about what SGH has uncovered, as well as a key plan. You all are very familiar with the, the building as our, as our, our student representatives. So this is that guidance hallway, um, that you've seen, um, the back hallway here. Um, once upon a time, we had a auto shop at the high school. There is some speculation that maybe that element as a program might have introduced some contamination, uh, into the building and onto those surfaces. Uh, that remains to be confirmed. Um, this is just one key plan. Um, so some of this deterioration is topside, some of it is below. Um, and the detailed report that you all have a copy of gets into more detail about, you know, where this is happening. So back to the article, um, the EFPPC is then requesting that SGH produce a set of engineered bid documents with a cost estimate, um, that addresses the repair and remediation that they think is appropriate for each of these specific, um, conditions. This is not to actually do the work, this is to come up with a set of documents that can be actually estimated. We have no idea what this is gonna cost right now. Um, and don't ask me, because I won't throw, I won't throw a number out, I won't even give you a range. Um, you know, there, we expect that there could actually be a number of menu options to address some of these problems. For instance, in the crawl spaces where it appears we've had, um, high levels of CO2 that's presented a problem, you know, a solution might be some ground-level drainage that isn't there today. It might be a vapor barrier, um, on the ground. It also might be a vapor barrier that's actually applied to the- It also might be a vapor barrier that's actually applied to the underside of the concrete. It could also be a high volume, low velocity, you know, mechanical system. Imagine some fans that move very slowly that just sort of vent the crawl space, if you will. I mean, these are just a few examples, and there could be many others, that SGH will frankly come up with and recommend. We're hopeful from a timeline perspective that should we get support at town meeting, that we can pull this together in reasonably quick order and be able to come back to capital planning, the school committee and select board, well prior to spring town meeting to understand the scope and the costs. And then, of course, have a conversation about funding sources. As you all well know, we generally like to do this kind of work over the summer when students are not in the building. And that would certainly be the case for some of this repair work. Importantly, this $100,000 includes some additional testing. Now that we know carbonation is the cause of some of the deterioration in the building, although we don't see flooring failure on the upper floors of the building, DPW has asked that we go in and just do some supplemental testing to be absolutely sure that there isn't something going on that frankly just hasn't expressed itself yet in the floor. So, we're able to do that. And with respect to the salts, just to give you an idea of kind of trying to turn over every stone, we do use water periodically to clean the floors in the building. Is it possible that chlorides are settling out in the distribution loop on the first floor of the building? Is it possible we're putting water on the floor that has chlorides in it? We need to test the water and figure that out. So, some of this is basically just trying to rule things out, which we think is money well spent, particularly if there is something there. So, that's just a quick review of, of the document. And then, what I, what I will do just briefly, it's a lengthy report, has a lot of pictures in it from SGH. Maybe I can blow this up, Andrew. Let's see. Yep, there we go. I'm just gonna get to a couple of pictures that I know are in here, and I apologize, this is a long report, so I don't wanna give everybody a headache as I scroll. SGH, I have described them to people before as they're sort of like the McKinsey of forensic engineers. And if you, if you haven't had a chance to read the report yet, I, this is, I think that structural engineers, when they graduate from college, who really wanna stay in academia, go to work for firms like this. Cause I, I think it's pretty cool to kinda go out on site, take samples, break it back down to chemical composition in the lab and really figure out the root cause. And I think they've done a great job of that. They have some, some photographs of some of those existing conditions. This is interesting photo here, you all will remember. So, in the guidance hallway, which has since been sort of temporarily repaired. So, that VCT that we all saw on the field trip, that's been removed. We put down a leveller and some carpet tile. But what you see here in photo number five, this is, I think, in the nurse's office suite or guidance. So, this is sort of just on the other side of the wall. And you can see there's very little undercut left there under the door. It's harder to sort of visually detect that that deformation is there. It's really why DPW first saw it in that more glossy floor, you know, as you're walking down a hallway. But this just speaks to kinda the, the spread of the, of the problem. Two things I wanted to find for you quickly. Here we go. So, here's some images of the guidance hallway after the floor came up. And I think they mentioned this in the report, that this really sort of struck me, it's a little unusual to find reinforcing steel so shallow in a concrete pore. And they agree as well. We're not sure if the construction documents in 1970 said it should be there, or if maybe it was a construction mistake that it was so shallow. But there's a consequence of this, which is, remember, this is the topside chloride contamination. So, it's time. So, it's what's the contaminant and how much time and its distance. So, the closer the reinforcing steel is to the surface, the more quickly the, you know, the alkalinity will change and, and it permits the rusting. So, unfortunately, you know, the steel was sort of closer to the contaminant. But again, this has all been sort of temporarily repaired. You've seen this image before, this is under the A Wing at the Commons. There's about a four-foot section of concrete that has already fallen. This crack runs another four or five feet. And we actually have some Unistrut and building systems and piping below. So, in terms of urgency, here's a perfect example where what we really need to do is get in there and mechanically, meaning like by hand, break up that loose concrete. It's already not doing anything. Once the concrete cracks, it effectively is no longer part of that structural system. That's gonna need to be mechanically broken up by hand and removed before a large heavy piece falls and actually damages something below. Here's a great example in photo 18. Just look at the length here. That's over four or five feet of concrete that has fallen and has exposed the rebar below. The good news is there, there really is a repair and remediation approach for this that SGH can, can bring forward. But this was the photo that I wanted to share with you all. When the report says they've discovered poor consolidation in the original pore, if you've ever seen concrete getting poured, you might see laborers are, the expression is rotting the concrete, sort of pushing it along. You pour a concrete slab, there's rebar there, but it's, it's like molasses. It, it flows very slowly. And so, it's really important to keep moving the concrete when it's in its kinda plastic form to be sure it's filling all the voids. And what you're seeing here in photo 19 is a photograph in the crawl space looking up at the underside. This is form work from 1970. That concrete simply never flowed and covered the rebar. So, this, this is not a, you know, renovation issue. It's simply concrete, sorry, rebar that never got covered up originally. And after the pore was done, of course, the form work was removed and then you, you have the shapes that you're sort of left with. So, I, I thought that was interesting and it speaks to really how thorough and comprehensive SGH was in their review. They, and here's another example. So, that's just frankly poor concrete work.
In 1971.
A year before I was born.
Yeah.
So, it, it's been a while. So, if I look at this and I say, okay, well, what's the good news? I mean, the good news is all I see is poor consolidation and it's 53, 54 years old. What I don't see is concrete spalling, I don't see delamination, right? It's not like, there's no indication that that opening has gotten any bigger. That, for all intents and purposes, has looked like that since the day they pulled the form work off. So, again, it just sort of speaks to the thoroughness with which, with, with, with which SGH has gotten in there and done their work. They have uncovered, we do have some standing water under the building. There's mention of that in the report. And then, the last comment is we, we do have at the high school some grade beams. So, you, you have a concrete beam that's sort of poured integral with the slab. And grade beams will often sort of rely on the underlying foundation for support. SGH has found some instances where grade beams have had washout underneath, so they're, they're spanning a distance now. And what we're not really sure on is, not sure about, how long has that washout been there? They wanna go back and look at the original construction documents, look at those original engineering calculations to the extent we can sort of reverse engineer them and be confident that this washout is not itself, you know, another sort of structural issue that has to be addressed. We don't know that it is, but it's really helpful to uncover. Sort of like taking your car to the mechanic because something sounds weird and while they're looking, they find something else that, you know, probably should be investigated. So, this happens in a couple of instances. That's it. I, I, there's really nothing more. I mean, there are a lot of great photos in here of their, their lab results that sort of explains the various findings that, that they had. Here's a perfect example in this core in photo 27 of a more appropriate depth for reinforcing steel. This is quite a bit deeper than what happened at the guidance hallway. So, I mean, when I saw this photo, I was a little relieved because maybe the guidance hallway was just an aberration, if you will. So, it's a very thorough report. Here again, you get into the details about what they found and where, whether it was topside or underside. So, that's, that's basically it. It's a lot to digest. We promised we would get this report to you guys. I wanna remind the committee that there's a reason this did not go through the capital planning process. It's because we just didn't have enough information to do it. But the chair of capital was with us on our walkthrough, you may remember Ms. Bergstrom. So, I personally have made capital very aware of this situation. They were copied on the memo that went out recently as well. So, they understand what the EFPC is asking for and why. And they are as interested, you know, as I think we are in what the recommendations will be, what the scope will be, what the costs will be. And only then can we really have a conversation about timing and funding source, perhaps even phasing that has come up. That's a question. There may be some elements of this that are more urgent than others. And then, of course, we also have to remember, some of this, just by its nature, really needs to be done when the building is not occupied. So, you know, that, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to, to deal with, particularly in terms of funding authorizations. So, I think that's, how long have I been talking? But you wanted me to go first. Did I miss something? I mean, I've tried to give this-
This is why you go first. You didn't miss anything.
I wanted to give an elevator speech. I feel like I failed.
No, I, no, I think it's important. I think the detail is important for a lot of reasons. It's not the least of which, we have a student representative sitting here wondering whether she's gonna fall to the floor at this very moment. I'm gonna show you you're not.
To actually be super honest, Dr. Hackett, I don't even like go in the E-Wing because I don't take many classes that are there. So, I, to be fully honest, didn't even know. But like, that's such an important thing, so I'm glad that, you know, Mr. Nixon, that we're working on that. So, thank you.
Yeah. That's an important point to both begin and end on, which the article does.
Right. The only thing I was gonna add.
The, the building is safe for occupancy. No doubt about it. And, and it's not happening everywhere, but it's happening in a number of areas. And the nature of the beast is it, it's not only continuing to deteriorate, but it is actually accelerating. So, it's in our interest to figure out what we're gonna do about it and do it quickly. We sometimes talk about the, the cost of waiting to do capital projects. And typically, when we talk about that, we talk about it in the frame of, you know, cost escalation, right? Cause everything's gonna be more, you know, a yard of loom is more expensive next year than it is this year. This is a little different because what we're actually talking about is the scope of the problem itself is expanding.
In addition to the costs.
And the costs, yeah. So, it's like, we're talking multiples.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question, Mr. Nixon? So, besides the teacher and me feeling like that we're really missing our opportunity for a performance-based assessment for both our chemistry and our engineering classes. So, Dr. Alana Emma, if they wanna get on that?
She's taking notes now.
Because I appreciated, I appreciated the detail about the chemistry and just personally found that fascinating of how that interacts with concrete. Just to clarify, Mr. Nixon, this report was identifying a problem, right? So, the next thing that we're asking SGH to do is to find the potential sources of that problem to make sure that we're containing the spread and coming up with possible solutions? Is that correct? Am I hearing that correctly?
Say it a little differently. This report does a couple of things. So, we now have a much better grasp of where we have problems. Remember, we, we, there were some obvious ones like guidance. They came out and looked at the entire first floor. I mean, they walked through, there's nothing on the second and third that seems like we have an issue. But that's where we will go back and do some supplemental. We wanted to be really clear about where we have the problem, so it's identifying the scope. We wanted to understand why it's happening. We now understand that. And there's two different pathways. Having, and so because they have now, and remember, so in some instances, it's topside deterioration like guidance. That's a different kind of fix than what you would do, for instance, underneath, right? Where the concrete has dropped. Importantly, the fix also may be different depending upon what the root cause is. So, if it's chloride contamination, the fix may be one thing. If it's carbonation, it may be another. So, this first report was all about figuring out where's the scope of the problem? Why is it happening? And then, with that information, what we are now requesting for fall town meeting is, okay, let's bring these guys back onboard and actually engineer the fix. And that fix will also address not only sort of the repair, but the remediation, like what do we do to prevent it from happening?
Right.
So, where's the salt coming from? Where's the, you know, what can we do about elevated CO2 levels, for example? So, cause we don't wanna spend a bunch of money and then five or six years from now have to do it all over again.
Yeah. Yeah. So, the next one will tell us for sure, or hopefully for sure, where that is coming from.
We presume so, and it, but it will have specific solutions in mind and we, along with a cost estimate.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And by the way, the newest member of the EFPC is Richard Rohan. I think he's precinct two captain for town meeting.
Might be.
I think he is. Richard is the FinCom appointee. He's actually a chemist. So, he is, he's the perfect guy to be following this and a good representative for FinCom to be describing everything that's going on. So, I've had a couple of good conversations with Richard to bring him up to speed on everything.
Awesome. Thank you.
I do have a couple of points on a personal level. I'm realizing that when I first took my, when I took my first super enhancy, I was 30 and there wasn't anybody in the room that was younger than me, except for students. So, when you say when, the year before you were born with a concrete pore, it was depressing for me. Apparently. And also, I am also realizing that I am deteriorating in accelerated rate. Take with the term. So, I'll just share that for what it's for.
They have to do with your salt intake.
Exactly. I think it absolutely does. Salt and sugar, maybe.
But hopefully not CO2.
Hopefully not CO2.
Yes.
Unknowingly.
Anyone who was born before Winchester High School was poured, raise a hand. All right, any other questions on this item? Yes?
I'm so sorry, Mr. Nixon.
Yeah.
I don't know if you mentioned this, I may have missed it. How long do you see like a fix for this issue taking? Like, I know you said obviously ideally it would happen when students are occupying the building. Could this happen in a summer? I know that we're like kind of in the early stages of that, but could it be done in a summer?
Yeah. So, in other words, how long would it take to actually perform the fix? So, it's a great question. It, it will partly depend upon what the fix is, but certainly the hope at this point is that work, even if it has to be kind of parsed out in phases, it could be done over the summer. The, the work in the guidance hallway, which I presume you've seen, that was particularly impressive because that came out very late. Wasn't that, was that August, Dr. Hackett or Andrew, when that flooring actually came up? So, they got all the flooring up, it was end of July, early August. They did a cementitious pore, they got the carpet tile down. Again, that's more sort of temporary, but it, it looks nice.
It looks awesome. Yeah.
It really is. It, it looks good. So, so we can get a lot of work done very quickly if we plan for it in advance. There are some big projects in the district where work begins like the day after school gets out. Sometimes there's even still teachers in the building and administrators. So, we've, we've had to do something like that in the past. The other interesting angle to this is, you know, there's quite a bit of work that may be required in the crawl spaces. So, we don't have any students down there that I'm aware of. Hopefully, we don't. You know, some of that work maybe could happen while the building's occupied. But again, we just gotta wait and see what the actual solutions are.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All right. So, I think this is a good point for me to hand it off to our vice chair to run the meeting and I'm just gonna pop out, but it was a great discussion. Thank you, Mr. Nixon, for that.
Taking copious notes.
Thank you.
So, the next item on our agenda, I believe, is the consideration of approval of revised security training dates.
We actually covered that.
Covered that? Okay. Then, that's okay. General education transportation? The new RFP? Is Andrew gonna chew that one up for us?
Yes, he is. Andrew? Yep. Go ahead. So, as you're aware, we have, this is the final year of our existing contract with North Suburban, our transportation vendor for general education. So, in front of you tonight is a draft timeline for that new RFP. So, looking to release a bid on the 6th and with the hope of awarding it kind of late November, early December, while we get it in front of school committee. So, that's kind of very high level. And I think if, I'd offer if anyone wants to review it ahead of time, welcome to connect with me and we can walk you through it before it goes out there.
So, we currently have a draft of the RFP done, completed. And Andrew worked with the transportation consultant that we have been working with off and on.[1761.21] This is really his particular area of expertise is really looking and reviewing RFPs and getting language in there that puts us in a real as advantageous position as possible. He has a lot of experience with things like if you cost it out this way, if you ask for them to provide, as we do now, for example, kind of a cost per bus, per run versus gasoline surcharge versus other methods that you can use to structure the actual financial arrangement of the agreement. He is, he's, he's very good at that. I have worked for him. I worked with him prior to in other school systems. And in one case, saved $200,000 on a transportation budget that was much bigger than ours, but it was it was significant. So the process would be, as Andrew's described, I believe in the past and I don't know for sure in the past how you have actually handled this as a committee in terms of whether or not you would want a representative or two representatives.
We have in the past.
We have in the past, yeah.
Be, I think, a good call for you to have some representation as a as a committee going through the process. As Andrew stated, he can put the RFP draft out. You can review it. Any questions, you can connect to him directly. But if you are interested in doing that, then you can let let me know or Tom know. And we can kind of coordinate with Andrew to get you set up into the schedule. The RFP for the public's consumption, for those listening and paying attention, will include language in and around, all things kind of being equal, preference would be that we have vehicles that are actually electrified versus fossil fuel based. So in addition to our incoming soon, I believe it's not here yet, the food services van that is going to be electric, which is the only vehicle we own, so that that will be electric. We would also put that, put that within the RFP bit and have them treat it separately as a separate cost item.
Where is that van that's incoming being charged?
So it doesn't doesn't exist yet. We're gonna add charging to the rear loading dock here at the high school. Yep. Yeah, close to where it's parked now.
And where's the funding coming, only because you mentioned that? Where's the funding coming for the charging station for the van at the high school?
And so the the charging station itself is included with the purchase. It's free from Ford.
So the wiring and the connection back to the panel or transformer?
That part is on us. It'll be through the food service revolving fund.
And do we have to wish an RFP for that?
We're not there yet. We're currently kind of getting some estimates on the scope involved. Yep. Probably three quotes, if anything, on an RFP.
Is it different than a standard household charging station? Because, I mean, I I have one from Ford and had it put in, and it wasn't a high-cost item.
I think the value on it is $1,200. This one. It is a little. It's a little heavier, you know, in terms of use because it's it's one that you can, they spec it with that Ford F-150 that you can kind of reverse and power your house with.
Yep.
So it's that same model. So there's a little more to the wiring components of it. But so we have someone coming in tomorrow to do some assessment on the scope and what's involved.
And presumably, our eligible inspector or the building department will have, you know, an opinion on like how it should be done.
Yep. Yeah, we've already walked it with facilities. We're kind of on the next step now, getting closer.
Are we able to in our RFP reflect any of the challenges we've had with transportation in the hopes of maybe improving some of those conditions going forward?
I think we have some options in terms of how we lay out those tiers. And there's some flexibility if, you know, depending on the pricing of consolidation or reworking a few things. But the way it's ordered is that we have flexibility to adapt to a different, a couple of different scenarios.
One of the scenarios which we are gonna look at through the RP process, it would be, again, it would be kind of a separate alternate, would be to bring the Parker's Lynch at Parker's School back into the elementary tier. That will be a as much a routing issue as anything else. It would obviously require more buses than we're running right now, but we've added buses that we did not anticipate adding at the beginning of of the year, which I do think will start to level out and continue every, I was just looked at him earlier today, the bus run times and stops, pickups and drop offs. We review on a daily basis. And we're seeing some, like today, we had a couple of anomalies with tier three routes that were over 30 minutes for bus five and bus bus five and bus nine, which didn't make, doesn't make sense. But then apparently there's some additional construction going on, I learned today. So there may, there may be, have been something involved with that. So I do believe the Lake Street Project Bridge will be open in Novemberish or so.
They just said November.
So that will help a tremendous amount. But we are doing better. But long answer to your question, I'm sorry, Mr. Brady. But we will try to look at that. We would like to incorporate that back into the to the elementary tier if we can do it. But obviously, there's a potential cost impact too, but.
Can I ask a question about the electrified bus and how we're prioritizing that? Are we, are there bus companies that currently have electrified bus fleets? Because I'd like to prioritize it, but also say we'll partner with bus companies that are like prioritize bus companies that are making the switch. I wouldn't want to eliminate bids for our transportation to only electrified bus fleets right now because I know that some bus companies are getting grants. They're in the process of doing it. And I personally, I I'm willing to work with a company that's in the process of doing that. And I don't want to eliminate them from a bid by saying we're prioritizing companies that only have electrified.
So I believe we're treating it as a separate part, piece of the bid package, correct?
Yeah, as an alternate bid. So they would build up bid on their typical diesel bus that we have now. And then what's a hybrid version and what's an all-electric version? If kind of applicable to their business.
And is the athletic transportation going out with this as well and as a separate bid, as we've done it before?
Yeah. So on athletics, we're on year two of that contract now, but we're going to include this to see if we can get better pricing.
Okay.
And then we'll have two options, either use existing contracts or go with this one.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And then with the goal of then it's kind of all co-terminous as we move forward and go through this process to keep it aligned with one vendor.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon?
An observation. There is a 600-pound gorilla in the industry. It's Bluebird. They announced this morning, they just delivered their I want to say it's their 15, 1500th electric bus to a school district. Bluebird, in the spring, I think in April, they, yep, they had Bluebird put 20 buses into operation in Boston. But from what I understand, and it's a company I've been following for a while, they they get traction with districts that have their own transportation department. So just like if you want to buy a Chevy or Ford, you go to a Chevy or Ford dealer. Typically, the school buses are sold through dealers. There is a Eastern Massachusetts or New England dealer that will sell you an electric school bus. And if you're a district that owns your buses, you can say, that's my priority, and you go and you get an electric bus. So that's what Boston has done. Again, they bought 20. I have no idea how big their fleet is. I'm sure it's huge. It would be interesting, just personal suggestion, knowing now that Boston has had them. I don't know how they got folded into the operation at the end of last school year. Presumably, they started running in the fall. It would be interesting if we have contacts in Boston that we could talk to and understand what their experiences are. But this is, my experience with this business is it's very regional. So there there will not be four or five bus companies bidding on this RFP because fuel is expensive and the buses are big. And whether they're diesel or electric, they take a lot of power to go a long distance, right? So a bus company out in Worcester, I cannot imagine is going to bid on a Winchester contract. So the pool here is especially shallow. And so to Ms. Bergstrom's point, what I'm I'm interested in reviewing.
Don't even know where you're gonna go with this.
Yeah, me too.
I would love to know, I want to be really thoughtful about how we can either incentivize adoption of electric. Or, and we've had this conversation before, do we dip our toe in the water about buying or leasing an electric fleet for the athletic transportation? That was something going back to JD's days, we 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 explored, didn't do. And I, my sense is there are more options in terms of vehicles because you don't need the big yellow school bus for every team, for some you do. If that's something that we're willing to explore, that would be interesting to talk about. And I guess there's no pressure, right? Because we're only in year two, right, on that contract? But I would just call, I I think we need to. I think we need to have reasonable expectations, right? About what we can pull off about an electrified bus fleet. If if we wanted to own buses, we would, pardon the pun, we'd be in the driver's seat and we could do what we wanted to do. Is that fair?
That is true, having come from a district where we own our own buses and our own Teamsters Union drivers and our own diesel mechanics and our own bus lot and garage and services. But.
So you're saying it's a big investment, Dr. Hackett?
It can be. I mean, but I I hear.
We'll use ARPA funds for all of it.
I thought they had been spent, no? But to your point, though, I mean, I think we are entering entering an interesting time period. And I think that some, there might be even some possibilities around some kind of hybrid arrangement organizationally for us to say, well, we will, you know, we're interested in this. We're willing to buy as part of our package and provide you the additional overhead it would take to buy these buses or this bus or whatever that would be electrified for these purposes. And we treat that part of the contract separately, differently than we do how we currently treat a contract where we're just basically buying the whole package, is the buses, the drivers, all of it. So so I, and I think it's a great, great point to to think about that with athletics because it's a smaller contract. It would, and you know, we can reach out to Boston. I'm assuming they probably got some federal subsidies or some additional funding sources from somewhere, but.
There was.
Worcester too, right?
Yeah, well, Worcester took over their fleet.
Right.
So that was, yeah, they they have now owned their entire fleet, which for Worcester, it makes perfect sense because they're so big.
Right.
And there are a lot of vendors out there, and there certainly are a lot of vendors out there who are going to be able to handle that size of a school system. You know, Springfield, Worcester would be the two big ones. I mean, we're going to see first student that more than likely. It's really any company that has a shop that's close enough regionally to be able to service their buses and get here on time to make the runs. So potentially, potentially, yeah.
The Inflation Reduction Act includes a billion dollars in grants for clean class six and seven heavy-duty vehicles, and that includes buses. But if we ever wanted to dip our toe into like that idea of the smaller fleet for athletics, meaning physically smaller vehicles, I just think about it in terms of geography. If we were going to own that fleet.
Right.
Where do they live? To like to my question to Mr. Marin, where's the van going to live? Oh, it's going to be at the back of the high school and it's, we got to put in a charger. We would have to think through that. Where do we park these vehicles and where do we have chargers? And then you have to think through, well, where do you go when they need maintenance? Because Bluebird is, they're selling buses and now they're building, you know, regional maintenance centers. But they don't have a service shop in every district to whom they've sold buses. They've sold a bunch of buses, I think in Dearborn, Michigan. I don't think they have a service center anywhere nearby. I mean, that's the next step is it's chicken or egg, right? And I guess from a, if you're running the business, you want to sell some buses before you start investing in the maintenance, but.
But finding a diesel mechanic versus finding people who can fix electrified buses is a whole different proposition.
If we owned a diesel bus and it broke down, there are some really talented mechanics right across from Stop and Shop who work on the DPW fleet who could fix just about anything. But but electric is a different animal.
Ms. Bollinese, did you have any questions before we move on?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I was just looking at Arlington and they have.
Yeah, Arlington too.
Two.
Electric buses.
Electric buses, for which they were rewarded $326,000 towards the purchase of those two buses.
So, Dr. Hackett, next on our agenda is the strategic framework and 2023, 24 goals.
That's not me. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Sorry, we're debugging over here.
So school committee has been working through a series of workshops on strategic planning over the last year. And Dr. Hackett has also been simultaneously working with the leadership team, thinking about what some of our big goals and values are as a district. And I think, Dr. Hackett, you have an overview here for us of sort of the beginning of bringing those two two buckets together.
I do. Thank you. So a couple of things. This actually has been kind of a multi-year process. We began the planning stages around this back in the, actually, my first year here, which was the 20, whatever my first year was here. During that school year, if you recall, we were.
2122?
We were actually, yes, it was 2122 school year. We were coming out of COVID. If you remember, we were coming out of the remote hybrid organizational structures. We were still masking. We were dealing with huge variance increases. And we were still dealing with 10-day quarantining, quarantining and all those things. So that particular year, to say it was a little bit of a slow start in terms of actually really trying to be forward-thinking and move forward on some strategic planning work. It was a little optimistic, I think, at that point. But the good news is there had been a lot of work done. The structures were in place for getting through and continuing to work through that particular, those particular issues. So but as we kind of got into 2223, we really started in earnest to have conversations both at the leadership team level. And when I say leadership team, I'm including, I'm including central office administration, I'm including all principals, all assistant principals, all content coordinators at the elementary level, as well as the content area directors. So that's a team of around 40 or so people that we bring together and affectionately known as the CIA. We bring together three, four times a year during the course of the year. In fact, we have a meeting on the 30th. And we also bring them together at the beginning of the year for administrative workshop, which we have done for the last several years. So we started that process with them looking at the existing strategic plan that included a mission statement that dated back to the, to 2015 that you'll see that still remains with us, that we've we've stuck with. We've tried to be efficient and judicious with how we've approached this work in that those of you who have been doing this a while know that getting into visioning and and parsing out and wordsmithing a mission statement can be an activity that just, it's like the song that never ends. It's important work, but it is time-intensive and it can, it can slow things down tremendously. We didn't feel we had the really the benefit of that kind of time. So we took what we felt and believe still is a, is an effective and and good mission statement from 2015. We just made the commitment to say we're going to stay with that mission statement. We're going to work off of that. What you're seeing tonight, I'm not asking for any school committee action. This is, this should look relatively familiar to you, although it is, we have, it's kind of like Generation Two. We are, we have, we have expanded on the work that we've done previously. You have seen the goal areas before. We've, we've added quite a bit of detail to the goal areas. We've gotten, I think, more clear on the framework and the structure of the framework. And the purposes of this tonight is to show you that, this iteration of it. We are in a good position to, and have been, that these, the school principals have been working off of the goal areas for their school improvement planning process, which will be coming to you on November 14th. The plans will be presented for your discussion and acknowledgement. It's not an approval process, but we'll try to, and we will try to get those to you earlier, ahead of time, so that you have those to go through. If you have questions, we can try to, try to get answers to those questions prior to the the 14th. Simultaneously, you're going to see the next iteration of this, what you're seeing tonight, which will be much more in a final form. But I think one of the things that, you know, that I have been and we have been internally thinking about is that we want this document and we want to understand that this document found, there are some fundamentals that need to stay in place. The structurally fundamentally need to stay in place for planning. However, we really believe, and we've seen it, and if we've learned anything from COVID, it's that we need to be flexible. We need to be able to make adjustments as we go. Things happen that we don't expect. That we need to be able to have enough agility to adapt to. And that's true from a system standpoint. It's true from a curricular standpoint. It's true from just a communication standpoint. There are a lot of reasons why the school system is now, I think, much more so than ever before, a need to really be able to adapt and make mid-course corrections if if necessary. So we see this document and we really want this document to be, and I hate the term because it's overused, but a living document. And part of how we've put this together is in in trying to help ensure that is one very specific thing and decision we made was to tie this and align this closely or as close as possible to the actual leadership and teacher evaluation standards that we receive from DESI. So the idea being that this is the work that administrators and our leadership does, right? They get evaluated on the rubric and the standards that DESI puts out. We go through that process. We do goal setting. We've. go through that process. We do goal setting. We've always done that. What we want to do is not have this be a layered on added thing for them. We want this to be integrated into their own professional goal setting, their own professional evaluation, and and part of what we just do. So the the school improvement plans are reflective of the leadership goals or leadership of the principal goals and the assistant principal goals. They're reflective of the teacher goals, and they're reflective of the school improvement plan in a way in these goals that ties together. So it is as provides as coherent a system as possible so that we're not just picking up the rubric at the end of the year to do the evaluation, and we're not just picking up the strategic plan at the end of the year to say, how have we done in making what kind of progress have we made? So that that's been a very concerted effort. There is actually some language pulled right from the rubric in some of this. Identify what it is, but I will show you the leadership standards so you can have a sense kind of how we're we're structuring it. We, as I said, we do have a leadership team meeting on the thirtieth. We will be be going back into this document. They'll be doing a lot of work in a different around different areas of this on the thirtieth. We'll do some additional redrafting. We'll come back to you. But we really believe that the timeline on this is going to be over the course of the next several months. We still have additional refinement to do. We want to make sure that we're getting some stakeholder feedback from not only teachers and other staff, but also from parents and community members, certainly from the school committee, and trying to as kind of your next step is is incorporating and rolling in the work and the conversations that you've had around some of the key areas that you are interested in, and how how do those fit into? And how does this plan reflect your priorities around around being school committee members in the actual total organizational system? And then I think I've covered everything on that actually slide. Does anyone have any questions on that? Because I think it's kind of important. Okay, so some design considerations for what you're seeing tonight. We're absolutely not starting from scratch. So while this is enhanced and and more detailed and will continue to become more detailed, we have had goals that you established in in two thousand and twenty-two. You'll see elements of those goals reflected in what you see tonight. What we've really tried to do is take a kind of a step back from those goals, become a little bit more thoughtful in 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 terms of how we how we use our overarching goal language so that they are our goals that we would love to be able to say will be around for a while, that can be used to for the stability of the of the school system. So people have, you know, we kind of know what our goals are, how we approach those goals on a year to year basis, what our initiatives are, what our strategies are. Those are the things that will change. But here's kind of who we are. Here's kind of what we these are the areas that we really believe deserve our focus and attention. And and what we absolutely know to be true is that, you know, you can only do so many things well. So so much of what we do here, it needs to be in the continued list of not just what are we going to do, but more importantly, what are we not going to do? And how do we make sure that we stay focused? Because we have a lot of talent. We have a lot of support in this in the community. We have there and there are a lot of great things going on. We have external factors from federal government to state government telling us we need to do this, or we need to do that. Those things continued, you know, and will always continue. But we just need to be really thoughtful because we're not over resourced. And we want to make sure that we're spending our time where we should be spending our time and stay focused on what we really care about, which in the end, this all comes back to student learning, and it all comes back to students. And it sometimes doesn't feel that way, and it can get a little esoteric. We have some of the the language around some of these goals and objectives. So that's always kind of the challenge to make sure that what we're doing and how we think about this has an impact on making things better for students. And there are a lot of things that we need to do to make things better for students, including making things better for staff, right? Because we just that is the interaction. There's nothing more important than the classroom. We also look at how good I am. I covered all this already.
I think you got all that, yeah.
All right, next slide, please. This is just a reminder. These were the goals that we established in two thousand and twenty-two. These have been with us. These were the district goals. You they should look familiar to you. And as you go through, you will see elements, if not flat out actual cotton paste wording on some of the things that are in these goals. So this is ties back to the past in several ways. And again, it's a it's a continued refinement and enhancement of where we're what we're looking to do as a school system. So the actual strategic planning framework elements on the next slide would be I was hitting my arrow button. It wasn't working. So so that you the framework that we're that we this is built on is a few things. One, we have a mission statement. What's our mission? It's our purpose. It's why we exist. We we and that mission statement is from June of two thousand and fifteen. That's where we are. That's where we're staying. The other element that we're we're looking to add in the the prior strategic plan had value statements. We're looking to call and move into more kind of what are our guiding principles? We're defining guiding principles as statements that guide us in all circumstances, irrespective of changes in our goals, our strategies, or our initiatives. So one of those things that we just hold to be true that are, we hope, timeless about how we work with students and what we should be doing as a public school system. And that work is on will be ongoing. That though that particular place is a great a great area where we can involve more stakeholders in those conversations, more reflective of what do we value as a school community? What do we think our guiding principles should be? Those conversations are are important conversations to to guide the work. But it's also those are conversations that are less technical in nature and don't require an intimate understanding of how a school system works to be able to contribute to what we think as a school community our guiding principles are. On then in that same slide, but no, actually, next slide, please. So the strategic framework work that you're work that you're looking at is built off of three general goal areas, and you have seen these before: teaching and learning, wellness, and operations and system supports. On the next slide, in the next layer of this framework, you'll see that each one of the goal areas will be broken out in the two slides that you see there. So in those two pictures, you see on the left hand side, teaching and learning. That is the general goal area. And underneath each of those three goal areas, so teaching and learning, wellness, and operations, there's a will have a statement that really is a commitment statement. So under teaching and learning, our commitment is that we support the growth and development of all students and staff through a culture of inclusivity, mutual respect, reflective practice, high expectations, and a commitment to continuous learning. That is draft language that will be talked about, that will be, I'm sure, redrafted as we go through the continuing to go through the process. But I think it's pretty solid. There may be some things that we could word better. There may be some things that are redundant or not included, but we feel pretty good about that as an actual commitment statement to the goal area of teaching and learning. Just to the right, you'll see you'll see what we're calling strategic priorities and objectives. So each one of these goal areas will have a goal commitment statement. And then then we will also have it'll also have strategic priorities. For teaching and learning, there are two strategic priority areas. One is curriculum instruction, and one is growth and development. Under those two priority areas, there are objectives that are more focused. So, for example, under curriculum instruction, to ensure that curriculum and instruction are aligned to state standards accessible by all students and in support of district and school priorities. That's a more specific description of what that goal area and that what the objectives in that goal area should be doing and how we should be thinking about our planning in and around curriculum instruction. There are two more that go along with that. And then under growth and development, there are two. One is to support and strengthen school and classroom cultures that promote inclusive and equitable student learning and development. So currently, the school principals and their staff are working on school improvement plans that will be touching on, not necessarily hitting both, not hitting all elements of both, but will be touching on the those strategic priorities and objectives within their school improvement plan. Then to the right, we've also started to draft out indicators for each goal area. So teaching and learning goal area, strategic priorities, curriculum instruction, and then on the right hand side, growth and development. These are statements that are really kind of what would it look like? What could it look like? What would it look like if we if we are doing what we want to do focused in the areas that we've identified under the teaching and learning goal area, under our strategic priorities of curriculum instruction on the left, and then growth and development on the right? There we the intention of this is to develop essentially kind of a bank of these so that when we're planning, when individual teachers are thinking about their goals, when school administrators are thinking about their goals, when school improvement plans are being developed, that there is a a bank of these that that people can go through and look at to see, are there some in here that really make a lot of sense for us in terms of what our priorities are? There are also many of them, and the intent is for, and they're not there yet, is for them to be measurable in some way, shape, or form, whether it is measurable through the development of a process, whether it's measurable for through implementation, whether it's like observable, whether it is a can be measured through student some kind of student performance or achievement data. They're all intended to be measurable at some level in order for us to be able to, as we plan, know how we're doing. So I'm going to stop there because those are the elements of the framework that we're putting before you.
I have an observation and a question.
Okay, Mr. Nixon.
I'm so glad you're stopping here because I did not want to interrupt your flow. When we evaluate the superintendent, we have to use a number of focus indicators. So it's obligatory. We have to use there is some number of indicators, and we use those in a formal way. So and I by great presentation, I appreciate this as a draft. A moment ago, you were you said with respect to the indicators, what would it look like? And then you said, what should it look like? So an just open question I have would be, are these are these are these indicators? And we're saying this is what it should look like, and it's all of these things, which to me is more prescriptive. It's setting expectations. Whereas on the on the flip side, if these are examples, because it could look like that, but it also might look like something else. So they it could be more just sort of a general guide. I think the messaging matters because if we say that instead of, for instance, indicators, what if we said teaching and learning expectations? That's a more formal explicit statement. And to me, all of those things are the expectations. I don't know. So I I wonder what you think about that because to to some degree, I mean, it is it's a framework, but we could be explicit about what we expect, or we we could actually have a bit of a softer approach and say, here are some examples. Does that make sense?
Total sense.
Because to me, it's it's fundamentally different when you say this is what it could look like or it should look like. Those are kind of two different things. So what are you thinking about sort of expectations?
So as as I view this, the expectations are the objectives, right? It's an expectation, for example, that we ensure that curriculum instruction are aligned to state standards accessible by all students and in support of district and school priorities. That's an expectation. Of whom? Of all of us, not defined here, but that's an expectation. And that will be in the district strategic plan. So those expectations through these objectives are spelled out clearly. I I the intent and the hope with the indicators is that if, in fact, as a school system, we say that we are really going to focus this year on the second objective under curriculum instruction, which is to develop students' abilities to think critically, problem solve, collaborate, and create through instructional practices that are student centered and differentiated. We want to go after that. That is a that is a priority objective for us under curriculum instruction. Then we would be I would be hoping that we could look over to the indicators and say, among these indicators, which ones make the most sense and align most directly to that expectation that we think are should be priority, that we think are measurable? And and where are they? Are those necessarily some of them might be at the district level, right? Because some of this is district work, and individual school can't accomplish or do some of these or shouldn't be expected to. Some of these will be school based. The high school has a different set of circumstances and challenges than the elementary level does around trying to make sure that students think critically and problem solve and collaborate. So that's how I see the interaction. In the end, something's got to be measurable, right? So because what gets measured gets done. So the measurement in in the statements of measurement or the metrics, I should say, for I think is a better term, are hopefully show up in the indicators, and it's a matter of us identifying what they are. And they may this is not obviously an all inclusive list. I mean, as we go through this work, we may look at that expectation and say, yeah, this one fits. But here's another thing that we really ought to be looking at when we're putting this plan together. I don't know if that answers the question.
It does. It does.
And Dr. Hackett, that aligns to Mr. Nixon's point back to how we use the evaluation tools for for the superintendent and educators. We don't assess them on every indicator every year.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. Correct.
Correct. But but to to add on to that, but but we know that because it's just like the five of us who have been through the process. So I'm I'm a big fan of documents that like stand on their own two feet. So as this sort of marches forward, I just I think it's important to explain.
Articulate that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, to articulate that. So it's not like a sidebar explanation. Yeah.
Absolutely. No, it's a great it's a great point. And then how, you know, the extent that 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 the indicators list is a is kind of a part of our public document is really, I think, a question, right? Because we'll have a bank of them. We'll know what they are. But what shows up for public and what we want to communicate and be clear about and explicit about are the ones we're using, not the bank of everything that we may or may not be using.
Right.
Right.
But I think it's helped. So yes, but I think it's important. It could be helpful for the public to know that the bank exists.
Right.
Because otherwise, where did your indicators come from?
Right.
But if you show everything, that also can be like confusing.
Overwhelming.
It can be an overwhelming list.
Other questions at this point? Okay. You can move on, Dr. Hackett.
Then I just really the next few slides really, I think, just kind of support and back up what I just we just went over. That particular slide are the DESI leadership standards. As you know, and you're very familiar with, there are four standards. These standards are and you'll see, like I said, some language that is lifted with 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 I took some liberties to lift some of this language out because this is a public document. It's, you know, it's not a copyright righted document. But I really wanted to tie the language in so it's clear when we're going through the evaluation process, supervision evaluation process, that we can identify what these are. So ideally, a principal, for example, should be able to have their school improvement plan, have the district plan, the school improvement plan. And when they go to do their self evaluation, should be able to make very make connections to the rubric very easily from the work that they're that they're doing. So those are the standards. On the next slide, I just show you in a slide that you can actually see. This is what you had seen before on teaching and learning, the statement of commitment, the strategic priorities with the objectives underneath in those two categories of curriculum instruction and growth and development. And then you'll see the next one, actually, we've turned wellness or we've turned wellness into community, culture, and well being. We've turned that goal area, and we broaden that goal area for a lot of reasons, one of which is that MCIEA actually through their survey and their assessment protocol that we use and will continue to be a part of and in developing that we put we get data produced from, actually has in their their framework, culture, school culture is one, and well being is another. So we've kind of tied into that as well because we already have a data source. And it's also, I think, it kind of broadens the discussion about what wellness can mean and what do we really mean by wellness. Under the strategic priorities for these for this goal area, relationships, connections, and engagement. Again, this is a draft document that's going to have more discussion and more work done, and safety and belonging. And finally, just so you can see it, operational systems and supports. Those are that is the final.
Oops, didn't go.
Bucket area, and the statement of commitment, and then the strategic priorities as they stand right now, policy and practices, and planning and resources. And and, you know, there are a lot of areas in which the school committee's work would interface with this planning and these goal areas. But there's none that I think is more clear, just from a what's your statutory authority and what do you exist for as a school committee than this this goal area? Because this would get into, obviously, policy, planning, budgeting, resource allocation, and the like. So. So, the next steps for us will be, again, this will go to the full leadership team on the 30th for some additional work, review, revision, and then we will be in this, the principals are still working on school improvement plans. Dr. Ellen Emma and myself have been meeting, and Lori Kirby as well, meeting with principals and talking through, where are you updating, how are you tying in, trying to answer questions. I think they're coming along very well. We're really trying to, and I think leadership team gets, gets it, the principals get it, we're trying to get away from school improvement plans that are just kind of one-year focused, and they can get checklist-y. We're really trying to get deeper. We're trying to really, we're in a good position to be able to think, I, I think, deeper and more critically about the work that we do. And I think that there, because there are so many things in place that we really don't need to talk about because they're in place, it's kind of what we do. Whereas in some school systems I've been in, that's not the case, that, you know, there are, there's a lot of work that foundationally has to be done and it has to be explicitly stated. Here, it's just not the case. I think we, you know, this is a great school system, and we should be taking advantage of the fact that we have good structures in place, we have good people in place, and I think the whole idea of going to another level, or certainly being able to really think more critically about the work that we do is, is, is in front of us. And I think that, I'm hopeful that this will help, let's take advantage of that and give us some direction around it.
Mr. Brady.
I appreciate all this. I'm excited to hear you mention student achievement data, so I'm, I'm just hoping that those are the types of pieces that we can see and hear as it evolves. You know, I, I think, setting some goals around our students' reading, vis-à-vis the DIBELS, and looking at our recent MCAS scores, and just saying where, where are those areas that we can improve, what groups of students can we target to help with that improvement? Because I think there's just, there's a lot of opportunity there. We are moving forward now, we've got some new administrators in place, leading schools, and new staff as well. So I think just kind of renewing that focus would definitely be worth doing.
Yeah, and I, I guess what, absolutely, no, no question. And I think that, you know, I think all school systems have really struggled to figure out what to do with the data that have been produced over the last couple of years. You know, and coming out of the pandemic, there's no question that there's been an impact. It's certainly, you know, it's nationwide, I'm sure it's worldwide at some, you know, some level. And I think trying to sift out, and we're kind of, I don't want to say it aloud because just looking at, you know, data, a little bit anecdotally, just kind of starting to see that now that our kids are back in school, and now they've been back in school for a little bit, and when we looked at, DIBELS is a good example, looking at DIBELS two years ago versus looking at DIBELS this year versus looking at just the beginning of the year DIBELS this year, how many kids are showing up in high need is, is dropping. And I think it's dropping because we're back in school, students are getting more intensive and direct instruction, their, you know, lives are back to normal at home. So I think we're, we're starting to, I hope, I believe, we're really kind of starting to see some rebound effect that keeps us out of that real deficit model of thinking, oh my God, you know, we, our kids just, we've got so much work to do. I think, I think we're starting to see some natural regression back to where we should be, where we would have expected to be. And I think, you know, we work with data a lot administratively, and from a leadership perspective, I mean, principals work with data a lot, there's, there are data conversations happening every single day in schools. So, making that more explicit for, for the public or for, as a school community, is, is I think more the task than necessarily the task of trying to figure out how we're working with data because we, we do work with data quite a bit. One of the things I will say, and we were on a call, we actually have a, a call every week with a software package, it's a, it's called AnalyticView, I've mentioned it before. We're really at a ground level with this company, they're excellent, it's really, it's a data warehouse, it's a data dashboard, but what we're able to do, and what we've been meeting with them on, is trying to, trying to really get to a place where we can look at multiple sources of data on, on standards, on identified standards, and say, okay, whatever the identified standards, standard is, and let's say it's in literacy, this is how our kids did on DIBELS, this is how our kids in third grade did on MCAS, this is how our kids did on project, I mean, performance-based assessments and, and data that's getting, taken within the classroom, so we can get a more complete picture of performance. And that, I, I'm hopeful that we're, we're getting closer and closer. I think this year at some point, we'll be able to start to show some of those, some of those piece, those reports to, to give everybody kind of a sense of at least what we're trying to do and what we're after. Because I think that, you know, there's a lot of data, how do you use it, when is it used, those are, that's always the biggest question, is the time and, and, you know, what are you doing with the data that you're collecting? And we do collect a lot of data, so.
Where does that data live?
So mostly in Aspen, and now transitioning into AnalyticView. So, we, we're providing them with a lot of our data, they have brought forward, MCAS data, they have brought forward DIBELS data. We've had to, you know, structurally, internally, be, you know, when we first started doing DIBELS or any of these assessments, you don't think about the total architecture, but where this is all going. So, there's been a lot of good work by a lot of people. Lynn Pledge, Andrew's office, we've had some additional support to, for example, CAT, Curtin, to make sure that how we're entering data within Aspen and the student ID numbers and how we are, is consistent so that when we bring it over into a, a different database, we're pulling the information in a way that is accessible. So we're not pulling student information and we don't have their ID number in Aspen, so then we have to go back and hand-enter it in the AnalyticView database or in DIBELS data. So that foundational work, that fundamental work has been done. I think structurally, we're, we're complete on that. So now, it is, we're meeting with the AnalyticView weekly to say, okay, here are the data, we've given you this, we've given you, now, this is how we want to see it. And it just gets more interesting because they can show us what they've done from last week, and this is what you said last week, and here's a dashboard view of this, and today we were looking at, for example, MCAS, how to report an MCAS score, and if we have a student meeting the standard in math, then, you know, how do we show that? And we talked about, well, we're kind of interested in knowing, if they're meeting, where are they on that continuum of meeting? Are they almost exceeding the standard? Are they just barely past partially meeting and into meeting? Where are they on that scale so that we start to also generate a sense for, you know, not just kids who are meeting, but, you know, where are they in that continuum? Because if we have students on the high end that are partially meeting, did they miss one question, did they miss two questions? What is the difference between the number of kids we have on the high end that partially meets, just not getting into that meets category? Which I think internally is interesting because there might be some stories that we learned from that, that if we do this or that differently, we think about that or this or that differently, or maybe we're, our coverage on this particular area isn't what we, isn't consistent with what MCAS is measuring. And then you get in the conversation about, well, MCAS is one assessment, so, but we really want to be able to kind of drill down on the performance data in a way that we can't easily just by going through the reports that we get through DESI.
Okay. I have a follow-up question, but I'll put it under future agenda items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Ellen Emma, if we have anything to add, but.
I just, Dr. Hackett, I just wanted to add, also, the AnalyticView is an internal database for us. This isn't something we're pushing out externally. This is in the way that Aspen is used by the district.
Correct.
It's a program that we buy and use just for people listening so that.
Yes. Good point, good clarification, and also, but we can determine if there are some public-facing dashboards or data that we want to produce.
To pull into it.
That we can, we can do that. So, yeah, it really is for internal data analysis, really with the idea that we're trying to inform instruction.
Any other questions for Dr. Hackett? Okay. Thank you very much, that's a lot of work going on. I only have one follow-up question before we move off this. I heard the next leadership team is October 30th. How do you see school committee engaging with this next? What's the next step for school committee as you see it?
I think you are after the 30th, and we get the next kind of version of this. And I think the committee really needs to have a conversation about having a workshop sometime in November. We've, we've also, on the future agenda items, we've talked about facilities, which is, I think, part of the conversation for you around that, that goal area. But I think once we have the next iteration, I do think the committee should explore, try to see if we can set up a workshop in, in November, early December, kind of at the latest. There are some other things that I think could go along with that, including kind of some pre-budget goal setting, because we are getting closer to budget season. We'll be at the next meeting presenting you with a draft budget timeline, and, and we need to, at that point, also talk about the finance subcommittee and what that, that's going to look like, and start having that group meet. There's been a lot of work done in, in the finance office with Andrew, just, we're in a much better position to roll things forward this year because all of our contracts are done, and there's been a lot of work done around position control. So, we're in a, I think, a better place to be able to get a, a good picture of rollover earlier than we have been in the past.
Awesome, thank you. And that's an excellent lead into our anticipated future agenda items. We have facilities planning and discussion and consideration of fall town meeting articles. Fall town meeting does start Monday, November 6th. One question I have for the committee is our future meeting dates are November 14th and December 5th. As Dr. Hackett just mentioned, we had discussed, also discussing facilities planning in November. That November 14th date may fall just after or in the middle of town meeting if it lasts more than three nights. So if the committee could think about what your appetite would be for perhaps a facilities planning slash strategic planning workshop at the end of November, we don't have that last Tuesday in November is not a scheduled meeting for us, we only have that singular meeting in November, and then, when again, on December 5th with where our vacation schedules are falling. So, if folks could just think about whether you do want to roll that into a November 14th meeting, or if that sounds like a lot in the middle of town meeting, if you could just communicate with Tom and let him know how you feel about those items, unless anybody has some feedback right now that I can take back to him. But don't feel obligated. Any other additional items before we close out this evening from any members?
I have a couple of thoughts. I, I'm interested in, if Heather Geary was here, I'd be looking squarely at her, so this is almost a Dr. Ellen Emma and Dr. Hackett. I'm, I'm interested in knowing if the rollout of the DESI's IEP Improvement Program, I think that's what they called it. I'm curious to know if that, what has been our experience with that in terms of staff time, budget impact? Perhaps it's just a talking point when you start talking about, you know, the, the budget workshop for next year? And I don't think we've talked about this at the school committee table. If we did, I apologize because I missed it. I mean, I know forms have changed, my understanding as processes have kind of changed a little bit too, there was some training that was involved. I'm just interested in knowing, like, do we have an impression of like outcomes for students? Do we have the, the, the teams? Good night, thanks for coming.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Do, do we have an impression from administration on how it's going? But I'm, I'm particularly interested in if there are any like staffing or budget impacts because it's not an optional thing, it changed. And I'm just kind of clueless about it. I mean, I know it's a thing, and I know it got rolled out. So, that would be, that maybe that's an agenda item, maybe not. I think it would be interesting if it was, but, but I would like to understand just when we talk about special education in the budget discussion, if that's something that could be focused on. And then, I want to focus back, so, on the analytics piece, the reason I was sort of, I was asking you leading questions, Dr. Hackett.
I always assume that, Mr. Nixon.
Well, sadly, I mean, there continue to be public school districts that are hit with malware attacks. And that's always something that, you know, it bothers me when I read about it in the press, and particularly now, you know, that we have the team, we have, and Andrew, you were like squarely on board and you're, you're in the position, no pressure. I would, I would like to have a sense of, you know, without sort of giving away the magic recipe, you know, at a public meeting, you know, what are the things we're sort of doing? What either, what processes do we have in place, what systems do we have in place? What are we doing, what are we not doing? So I appreciate Ms. Bergstrom's follow-up, because my question to you was, you know, where does the data live? So how, are, are there tools we're using strictly internally? Are we exporting data? Are we making data available to outside consultants? And to the extent we are, what are we doing about that? So, I think that, that is, you know, one of the nightmare scenarios is there's a big data breach, and particularly if, you know, the district is sort of held hostage and, and we lose valuable data, and that impacts teaching and learning, as it has at some districts across the country. So, again, without sort of getting into all the weeds on it for obvious reasons, I think that would be a helpful thing for us to just sort of touch base on. Because I think, Dr. Hackett, you've done, you've, you've done a great job sort of making good on some of your commitments about gathering data and sharing data and leveraging data. The more tools we're using, particularly if we have public-facing stuff, kind of makes me wonder where that lives and how do, how are we, how are we locking the doors, so to speak? Does that make sense?
Absolutely makes sense. And I got a guy next to you who would talk about that for as long as you let him.
Okay.
And Mr. Nixon, to address your first question.
Yeah.
I was able to attend the SPED PAC coffee that they had last Friday, which was lovely, where Ms. Gary introduced all the special education supervisors and talked a little bit about their background and her goals for the Special Education Department for the year, and one of the things that she addressed was the new IEP process, and that there are some, had been some early adopters, districts last year, there were some districts piloting this year, but that Winchester would not be actually adopting the new IEP form until next school year.
Ah, I did not realize that.
So we're not obligated to put it in place this school year.
Okay.
It's, it's a longer project, and so we won't fully be adopting it until next school year. So I, in fact, directed the same question you had back to Dr. Hackett following that meeting, which was, was there any considerations we had for the budget to be able to support that process? Because it seems to fit nicely into the next fiscal year. Does that sound?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and just also, the SPED PAC has met once this year, and then they had the meeting with the special education supervisors, just to put it out there to the community. They are looking for parents that have students in the district that currently have IEPs or 504 plans, they're looking to get people involved at every level and to try to bring back a lot of the activities that the PAC had done in the past, which was the coffees with staff and education events for parents, and really looking to get out into the community more again as we've come out of COVID, and they're trying to rebuild as well. So, just to plug for the special education PAC and the work that they do with parents and families in the community, and it was, it was really, it was really a good meeting on Friday to be able to see the parents have the opportunities to interact in a more relaxed environment, not just in their IEP meeting with the, with the folks who are really helping to coordinate around their children's education plans. So, shout out to them and the SPED supervisors for, who were able to be at that meeting and really share their passion for SPED, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
So, Dr. Hackett, understand, I appreciate the clarification. So if the plan is next school year adopting this, it would be interesting to know, or do we have some peer districts who are doing it this year, have some experience? I don't know if you know anybody in Lexington, if they're doing it this year. I know Seamus, I don't know what your district's doing, but it would, it'd be interesting if we have contacts that we can sort of reach out to. Thank you.
Certainly.
And other than that, if nobody has anything else.
I was just going to say, I think you had already mentioned the school improvement plans as a future agenda item. Was this also a year of youth risk behavior survey data?
Dr. Ellen Emma, is this this year? It's not, is it?
No, we just did it last year.
We did do it last year. Okay, it's all blending together. I was thinking, okay.
So, we're, we're adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Important action there, thank you.
Back just in time, Tom.